Have you got any agenda? Okay, it's June 29. Close to 10 o'clock. I don't have a clock, so anyway, we're gonna call this meeting no word. Roll call. Am here. Smile. Here. Mr. Murphy. Here. Number four, approval payroll warrants and claims.
I'll move we better do so.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Number five, approval in the minutes of the last meeting, June 15, 2020. Any additions or corrections? You guys see?
I'll make motion we do so.
Aye, sounds good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the road use agreement within Venergy. I'll make the motion, but we take no action on that until I get a legal opinion from the DA on one of the items. Sounds good to me.
Well, do we need to second that or?
No action. Second and then.
Yeah, I'll second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven. Acknowledgement regarding the audit engagement letter to the Board of Commissioners of Woods County for State Auditers Office.
Something we have to do every year, isn't it?
Well, when they're coming, we're acknowledging that they're coming, so it's.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding the contract for services between Woods County and County Budgeting Services LLC for fiscal year 2021 in an amount of $7,500. Do you know how much it's been in the past?
I think it's been a little less in the past, but I'm not sure a dollar now.
Okay.
There's a buddy.
Buddy Carroll.
Buddy Carroll guy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gotta be done. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Granted, it's like assuming checks aren't getting started on.
Looks like two places on the hill. That is coffee and yam, probably what it was like. We approve that, do we pay that or do that? Does that come out there about? It should.
It should come out there.
They had a lot of carryover, so. Okay. Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding contract for services between Woods County Health Department and County Budgeting Services LLC for fiscal year 2021 in an amount of $1,350.
I'll move we approve that. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does Buddy do theirs too? Yes. Number 10, discussion of possible action regarding bid. Number 19, 20, 19, six month bids. I think we've already approved the bids. I think we just individually need to go through and mark which ones we each commissioner accepts. And I really haven't had a chance to go over mine, but. I mean, I do.
We, it's already.
Next week or something.
They've already been approved. All we gotta do is mark them, so. Is she, all of the bids that she accepted and put on here, I'm pretty sure were all legal bids, so it's our decision for each commissioner to check which ones.
Okay, I have given mine already.
So, anyway. So, I don't think we'll have, we won't take any action on that right now, except for the bids. They all look good, didn't they David? I mean, they.
Yeah, everything.
So, I don't think there's anything wrong with them bids. It's just that we have to make our decisions.
And no action on.
Did they, anybody have to talk to the election people and look and see if that was all jiving right?
Yeah, she had her recommendations.
Uh huh.
They only have it here. They only received one bid.
Okay. Okay, discussion of possible action regarding bid 19, 20, 20, annual ballot bids. And that bid is from digital balloting, ballot printing contract.
I'll make a motion to accept that if that's the only one we got.
I guess it's from Royal Printing Company. I'll second.
I think they're about the only one to know that.
Aye. She's good with that. All in favor?
Aye.
You mind, did you bring her stamp down?
I didn't bring it.
Well, there's no place for us to sign up here. Well, I guess we can just sign, we'll just sign over here.
I can run that and get it real quick.
Okay. Number 12, discussion of possible action regarding the Woods County Financial Report ending 6/30/2018. I guess. The, the real story is, it's. Kind of beginning balance. Trust and agency funds was $45,633,351.91. And the ending balance is $57,256,789.91. I guess I'd entertain a motion. We, but look, we've got a habit, the auditor has to have it, and we have to have it for several other things. They just have formality that's done every year. And it looks like the ending balance is larger than the bigger bound, the beginning balance, so I'd say we're still in good shape, so.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Number 13, discussion of possible action regarding the programming resolution for D1 project. Number job JP 3049208.
I don't know which one that is, but.
Well, it'll say on the second page, I think. One of them, I think, was your Greenleaf.
Yeah.
Bridge project that I looked at to see what these were about.
That's what this one is. I'll move we accept that.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to discussion of possible action regarding the programming resolution for D1 project, number JP 3456104.
That is the bridge itself and approaches for the Salt Fork Bridge in Orange County.
Okay.
I'll move we accept that also.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
This is blacktop and this is the bridge. Three mile, four mile blacktop, and this is the bridge.
Yeah, that first one's that three seven yard.
I didn't saw any of those. It's already went out for bids, hasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, isn't that Salt Fork River Bridge? Didn't they do that one?
That, that's not Salt Fork. That's a.
What's that say, Salt Fork?
Yeah, approaches over Salt Fork Bridge. Five miles north of it.
Would that, would that be?
That.
What you're talking about?
Yeah, but I think that, I'm not sure that should be.
It, I don't think it approaches that one the Winchester did though? Or did they got some cleanup and finishing the ends or something?
Oh, that'd be right. That's Salt Fork River Bridge. Just to be on.
Did you figure out where yours is at Randy?
Is this mine there?
No, this is mine. He's still got your two. If you wanna go ahead and one hand this jump. Mine, mine is the second phase of that.
That's, that's the green cutoff right there.
Yes. That, that'll be your part, but my part of it is what mine is here. What you saying David?
I'm not sure that it gets wrong.
I think that's what this is too. This is part of it, I think. Extend. Yeah, this is two projects on the green cutoff right here. There's four mile to three mile. Let's see. Extend from north-south 247, three mile east to north-south 250. County Road East West 19, we got 114, and it's just four miles to north-south 228.
I saw it one year.
Had the bench surveying out there on that property?
I, I haven't seen it. Okay, you good with both of these David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 15, discussion of possible action regarding the programming resolution for D2 project JP 3115704. And that is the five miles of road from Freedom to the district line on the Freedom Shortcut Route.
That's your project?
Yes.
Well, where does yours, uh, 250, does it end at 250 or 247?
No. County Road East-West 19 from north-south 225.
225?
Yeah, extends east five miles. Phase two. That's phase two of my project. My phase one was those two bridges up on Core Road.
Uh huh.
And then phase two is the, is that half, or that part of the Freedom Shortcut?
East-West from north-south 247, three mile east to 250. That, that's over on your side, isn't it? 250? Hell, my, I get it 270, 280.
Five goes, yeah, but those aren't our county roads. Those are ODOTs, by ODOTs maps.
Yeah, but the, the north-south ones are, are pretty close to the same. They just have an extra number.
Yeah.
Not the east-west ones, but. I'm saying from 250, your county road 250, what's that over there? Couple miles, that'd be.
Well, two.
Lester's Road's about 280? 290?
No, uh, 270.
Ernest Road, what's it?
270.
That's 270.
Yeah, cause 260 is rated. There's no section.
Two miles to the corner.
Yeah.
Down there.
Yeah, so it'd be.
That'd be 250?
That's 250 of the curve.
Yeah. This one's saying. North-south 247 extend east to 250. So, over there about what Jimmy London's would be 247? And going east to 250? Three miles west of, of this curve is where this starts.
Right.
And that's, yours is a project starting in Freedom and going east how far?
Well, it's east-west 119.
That's Freedom Cutoff.
Okay. From.
But is that Freedom, that's Freedom Cutoff in line? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well.
East-west 19's on the, the Rockaway Road, then you go a mile north. Would that Freedom be east-west 18 or? I don't know if they go north or.
Well, see this one.
Yeah, they probably.
See, this one starts at 250, which is that, the curve, or that road to. Uh, and it goes east five miles.
Yeah, and then here, it starts at 247 and goes east three miles to 250. So, I'm in front of you there, it seems like. You're in the middle and then.
Well, this one's in the middle. It seems to me like those two of those are supposed to be D2s.
Yeah, that one there.
And then yours.
Yeah, because.
How many miles is yours?
Mine is four miles. And that goes to right west of Pipers.
Okay.
The, the last bit that's gonna be done is right there in front of Carberry's, is what Donnie told me.
Okay, so.
Come from east to right east-west of Pipers, and then they'll go to Freedom and come all the way and right there in front of Carberry's, that last mile in front of Carberry's will be the last.
Last one done.
That's, that's how he told me. You know, it was gonna start in Freedom and they pushed, pushed mine in front of. So, they'll start on the west end or the, the east. It says four miles to north-south 228. And then that one there had.
This is, this is that three miles in the middle.
Yeah. That. It starts at, at 250 and goes to 227 or? Well, they go up and over the hill to, to 270, that's two mile, right?
East to two, to north-south two. Okay.
And then Carberry's would be another mile. That would be the finish. Right? Isn't it two mile from that curve up there to Ernest Road? That's two miles, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, one more mile would be three mile.
Why don't they call that north-south 227? And stood at 247 like this is 225?
Mm-hmm.
I, I understand you're, you're calling that 270, which that's the two miles in there. Extend three from.
You're coming from the curve up over the hill to Ernest Road, that's two mile. And then one more mile will put you to my new road, east of, or right west of Piper. But that one mile there is the last bit. Would that project you got, will that get you from Freedom to that point?
Well, here's what. Two, 250 extend five east. Well, they're really, here's where I'm confused, don't know.
250, they're doing it twice almost, look like to me.
Well, this, this county road east-west 19, which if you call it the Freedom Shortcut, if that's what that is, from north-south 250, 225, okay. Extend east five miles.
So, it don't make no sense. That'd put a layer of horse disposal.
That's what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm.
There, there.
Two, three, four, five, yeah.
One mile of that's already done on the first project, cause it goes to, to east of Pipers, right there west of Pipers, that road, that's Morning Star Road. I think that's 280. Four miles, that's four miles from Highway 14 to there. And then they're saying they're gonna do another layer on top of that?
Right. I, I think maybe we should just take no action, give clarification on this.
Make sure that.
I mean, on, on the last three, right? I mean.
Yeah, well, this, me and yours.
Yeah, the two, District two, District three, the two District threes. And to be certain, uh.
Cause they're three million dollar projects.
Well, that one of mine was four.
This is three million 600, and then the other one was like three million 500.
Three, seven, it's four, five.
Yeah, took a lot of money there.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to have the paperwork right, too. And it, it may just be typos, but.
It might be cause they swapped them deals around, but.
Yeah. I don't know, but I think we need to get clarification.
It shouldn't be going over the same thing there like that, I don't think.
Yeah.
So.
You got that one John?
Yeah.
Well, let's just take no action on, on 15, 16, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Till we're clear on that.
Yeah.
I guess we can table it to the next meeting, but it really doesn't matter, does it? I mean, whether it's tabled or. Tabled means you gotta act on it at the next meeting. No action.
We can find out if Donnie can clarify it and make sure we're.
So, we can call it tabled or?
We'll take no action either way.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we take no action on those serious.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 18, discussion of possible action regarding contract EOS for juvenile detention services at Pittsburgh County Juvenile, Regional Juvenile Detention Center in an amount of $38.97 per child per day.
I'll move we accept that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go ahead. Number 19, discussion of possible action regarding the fiscal year 2020 contract renewal for detention transportation with Oklahoma Office of Juvenile Affairs.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries there.
Is that our next meeting on my birthday?
Is that new business?
Yeah, I'm probably.
That's the old business, really, if you wanna call it.
Getting overall.
I've never seen your business.
Roll water projects.
Uh.
This is, this is to carry the money over, that's in this fiscal year and the next fiscal year.
Okay.
In the general fund.
Okay. And I, I just need to sign that. We, we did that last week, yeah, okay.
Would you have a jury scanner? Never question me. Would you have a jury scanner?
Uh, my kids got it, I don't know.
Or you got a jury and a scanner?
He's got, I think he's got, his brother or sister. Captain's.
Sounds like they were farmers and they dug all by hand.
His dad was a technician down at, you know, Comiskey or. Home.
No new business?
I don't have any.
Oh, by the way, last week, John, or last time we met, those bridges, Donnie inspected. Those were yours?
Yeah.
Okay. I asked him at C D, so.
That they were all good?
Yeah, okay.
I don't have any new business. It's hot. It's been real hot down there.
Could get hotter, it sounds like.
Doesn't seem like, uh.
Right. It sounds like probably dry for quite a while.
It's pretty dry down in there, too.
Take a look, too.
I just about got stuck in the dozer, though. Down there on four fifty by the cemetery in the ditch.
Wet, was it?
It's wet there. All that water comes down through their drains into that.
Oh, right there, yeah.
Okay, twenty-one. I guess we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We are done.